So, welcome everyone. I am going to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. First order of business, if Mr. Q will lead us in the pledge and then we'll do some nominations for board chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Q. I would entertain anybody to make a motion for our board chair. Would anybody like to make a motion? Brian?
I would move to nominate Alice Higgins to be board chair.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second. We'll all second.
So, Brian? Any discussion?
No. I'm happy to do it for another year. I told Chris I would like to, but I personally, I don't think we need a policy like some other boards do, but I do think that it should, I think we benefit from it not being a long-term tenure personally. I think that, I think next year is Brian's turn, right? He's being groomed if he's assistant chair.
I think you get to make that nomination.
I will, unless somebody else wants it. He doesn't want it.
That sounds like a yes from Allison to take it. I'll just take a formal vote, so if anyone want to go around, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's my favorite part, I get to turn this meeting back over to you.
All right.
Madam Chair, you take over.
All right.
Where can we go, Chris?
Thanks.
Would anybody like to nominate a vice chair?
Nominate Brian.
I'll second that.
Don't want to.
If you don't want to do it, or you don't want to be chair in the future, then...
I grasp that, because when we come to it, being vice chair is not a heavy lift. I'm happy to continue in that.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're good to go. I'll get these to you before your time to leave, Molly.
Oh, we have them.
All right. So, we have a non-public tonight.
Correct.
So, just as FYI for everybody, for certified staff renewal, so at 6:03, we will open up for public comment. Anybody have public comment? Ms. Leo?
I think...
And I think we're going to have an answer to your question tonight.
Depends on what the question is.
I guess it doesn't know what.
Hi, Kim Leo, Labrou Street. I know, I saw the playground equipment, which is really cool, but my other public comment was, I know the field here gets really torn up by the kids and grass doesn't grow. Have we ever considered doing clover or something along that lines that's a little more hardy? So, it's, one, it's less water needy, and two, it's drought tolerant and local for the bare spots instead of filling it in with grass or whatever. It may be something that holds up easier.
And my kids won't come home as dirty?
Yeah.
I think the answer is we haven't probably considered it, but we'll write it down.
Okay, because I'd be willing to toss out a whole bag that I bought.
Perfect.
But again, as a parent, thank you guys for everything you guys do. I know this last season of election and stuff is, no. Thank you, guys. You guys don't deserve what you go get in the public for backlash of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, it will be open until 6:33 if anybody changes their mind. 6:33. All right. So, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Anybody have any? I had, there was, there were two paragraphs that were repeated on page three. Halfway down, Ms. Bedard asked how many drills were done, and then the motion under it are both also up above, so they could be deleted. And then, on page five, I just wanted to make sure, up top, the second paragraph about the pricing, or about the money, the fire alarm project, and then the next, the heat pump project, is that the right thing? I don't think so. No, I didn't think so.
The 73366.
Right.
I think that was a different project.
Yes. Okay. And then, under principal report, Katie's last name is wrong all the way through.
Also, at the top, it says administration present.
Yep.
It said school counselor Katie Frazell, so it should be assistant principal Katie Gallo.
Yes. I missed it up top, thank you.
Add one, somebody else was going to add.
All right. Anybody else? Did you have others?
That was it.
That was it. Come on, Brian.
So, on page five, principal report, the last intended paragraph, principal reported, Brentwood has, and elsewhere, referred to the principal by name, so principal Q reported.
Thanks.
Let's give principal Q credit for reporting.
Glad it was this principal. Could have been any principal.
Well, it's the principal of the thing. Make sure.
That's all you got?
Correct. Well, you caught the other thing.
Okay.
And you know, above, like, the other thing, the minor, like, in that same section, review data from beginning of the year to current, I prefer present, but that's not a big deal.
I have one more. On page one, when it says, when Kim, the public comment, Kim Leo is talking about fruit-bearing tree, should be trees. It's in there twice in that paragraph.
Bearing trees.
It's almost like a challenge to see if I can find one that Brian...
All right. Anybody else have anything? All right. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. We are going down to task, the committee chair, the committee, so safety and security?
No update.
No update. Superintendent, there's also no update. So, you're up.
All right. So, really, invaluable, Heather Murray provided the policy revision brief, which gives you all the information you need, I think, about these policies before us tonight, that summarized basically things that are tied to state laws, identifying the state laws they're tied to. I did review the policies and compared them to the state laws, and they're generally, they track. I wasn't unable to attend the policy meeting, but I did submit comments in advance via email, and I know they were addressed, so the policies are included here. I'm sure you've all read them. I don't have much more to add beyond what Heather's put in the brief to summarize them for you.
So, these were all new policies?
They're all required.
Right.
So, they are new, what we did, because I presented all these ones, so it's great, you know, that Brian gave the information, but we took the sample policy from New Hampshire School Boards Association, looked at any policies that we currently have that are mentioned above, and then wrote specific to us. So, there was more, but they were high school specific that actually had some changes. These are the only elementary school ones, and they are required.
Okay.
It's pretty clear cut.
There were, like, double the number of those policies addressed at that meeting, but a lot of them weren't...
For high school.
For us.
I, like, have some questions, not per se about the policies, some of the policies, but like, about sort of how we're doing against these policies. And I also, as an aside, and I don't know if it's right to have this conversation here, but you know, there is the new district-wide wellness committee, and I am on that, and we are working on a wellness policy that will kind of run parallel to some of this. So, I can give an update about that in a bit, I guess, but do you want to, do we want to go, do you want to go through them one by one, I guess?
Sure. So, just the motions, or further discussion, or did you want to talk about...
Do you want me to just ask my questions then, before we get to all of, they're just related to the health education ones?
Mm-hmm.
But they're all, so, the first, the health education, the first one, I-H-A-M, about sex ed and sort of that one. Do we do that here?
Yes.
We do. And is it done as a particular part of the curriculum?
Through health. It's going to be our PE teacher who's going to be providing that. We'll be notifying families well in advance.
Okay. So, it hasn't been done previously, but it's going to be?
It happened last year, too.
It happened last year, too. At what grade?
Fourth and fifth.
Okay.
And we also just had Haven visit, and that's more about body safety and sexuality.
Right.
But just to ensure that everybody knew that was happening, we sent notice out for Haven's visit as well.
Okay. All right.
I don't know that we've ever done anything but kind of explain what we're doing and, like, the parameters of the conversation and the curriculum. We haven't talked about, you can opt out.
Right.
I don't know that that's been part of the letter, or if it's required by the policy.
Okay.
I mean, we have another policy that says that parents can opt out out of any material that they don't like, so...
Yep. Yeah, I'm just saying, when I, when I send out the notification, I don't suggest that we opt out.
Okay. All right.
Also, the title of this policy, I-H-A-M, has a spelling error.
Exception.
Yes. Exception.
I never find titles.
Brian, you didn't catch that. And then, the next one about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, do we do anything about that here?
Not aware of that being part of our curriculum.
Yeah. So, like, when I read it, I was like, this is not per se elementary curriculum, except for that, you know, those of us who have middle schoolers just got an email last week about the vaping prevalence at the middle school, and I think, I think it said six devices were confiscated just last week, and so perhaps it's not too early to be addressing it in fifth grade here.
Right.
I don't know. That was just sort of my health educator role, like, Dr. Jones, Dr. Bonifidiol, I mean, it has to be age appropriate, but...
No, I mean, I definitely think there's a role for, for education, I mean, in, you know, I just think back to, like, I've done educations with fifth graders, and the lovely thing about them is they're like, "I would never do that." But I, you know, and, and like, just because that's the developmental stage that they're at, right? Like, but I don't think it hurts to have it out there as a thing.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like a pretty significant problem that I don't think it should be at the middle school.
Has this come up at the SOU-wide wellness committee, this kind of curriculum?
So, we haven't got there yet, but I think that it probably will.
Because we don't have health teachers in our elementary schools.
You don't have curriculum.
Right. Typically, our PE teachers will touch upon, obviously, exercise, nutrition, but I would probably want to work with Chris and the curriculum teams about developing what that would look like.
Yes, I'll give a quick update on that. So, we met on the march, then I met with all of the PE teachers from elementary school because health is something that's taught differently at each of our elementary schools, and they're feeling, how do we streamline it so that we know what's being taught at what grade level and what's the topic? So, that is something that we're going to continue to go through. We, wellness, health, and PE together, we are, it's part of the competency review cycle, so we've got two more meetings this year to identify what we're teaching and then look at the gap, so I think this is going to be flushed out. It's also, we're talking about, what's the role of the school counselor, and what's the role of the school nurse? So, it's a, it's a conversation that we're already having, and how it will get, you know, be played out. So, I would anticipate that, you know, by the end of the year, we'll have a better idea of how we'd like to present it, and then who would be responsible. I think it will be more of a team effort.
Yeah.
But it's definitely something that we already cover under the national health competencies about making positive and healthy choices. Drugs, alcohol are part of that.
Right.
So, that's, that's one of the competencies that they do have.
But like, in the New Hampshire curriculum, right, nutrition, I think, only has to be covered in, like, the third grade, like, it's, it's miniscule, so that is something that we are looking at, at the wellness committee, but the wellness committee's not fully built yet, and so there's not all the right people at the table yet, and so that is part of it, but it's been sort of a slow start, but I think we're meeting with Esther on Thursday to kind of tell her where we think we're headed with the policy, and so then I think we'll get a little more traction. But I think that curriculum is slightly outside of the policy that we're looking at, but I think it's part of the conversation, and we have a lot of the PE teachers, we have a couple of nurses, the elementary, I think, the East Kingston nurses on that, so...
No, I'm just saying, there's no program like DARE that comes in to the school anymore.
Is DARE still a thing?
There's definitely a prevention.
Yes. We have it at two of our elementary schools.
We use them at the club from kindergarten to 12th grade. They're like, kind of like SEL prevention combo. They're out there for young kids.
Yeah. I mean, that, one of the conversations that we've had is, like, where does health curriculum fit in, right? Like, how, PE, there's a role there, but, you know, some of the best practices is that health curriculum fit, integrate into the regular curriculum, and, but I think that nobody at the table currently wants to touch that as being a possibility or not, you know, unless, you know, there's some cool, like, I have a, one of the faculty at Merrimack has written, it's called Project, some, it might be called Project Health, and it's about, like, you know, if you're teaching graphing and third grade math, can you teach, like, can they, can they poll their classmates about what vegetables they like the most, right? Like, can you build it into everyday curriculum? But, so anyways, yeah, I guess more to come, then.
So, the legal reference, RSA 18911D, says that we should already be providing age and developmentally appropriate drug and alcohol education. So, we should do that.
Yeah.
And then, can I skip this library one and go to the last health one, and then go So, then, I-M-A-H. So, the policy says, board recommends that students and staff participate in developmentally appropriate physical activity and exercise for 30 to 60 minutes. You know, the goal is 60 minutes, like, that's, play 60 is, is the national goal. So, we did, Ron participated in the survey that we did. We did like a wellness inventory of all of the schools, and I just pulled a little bit of data about that, just for everybody, so we had a reference, but for PE, all of the elementary schools have PE two, two days. So, you know, we have it two days, two-thirds of the year, and one-third of the year, we don't have it two days. We have it only one day, and so I, that's just a point of, average PE time was 45 minutes, which I think we were there, too, right? And then, for that other 60 minutes, like, recess counts, too, and so recess, three elementary schools have two recesses a day, and then, one, which I believe would be Lincoln Street, the way it was answered, has two recesses for grades three and four, but only one for grade five. So, basically, you know, four of the towns have two recesses a day, and two of us don't. And then, of those four that have two a day, they have 45 minutes of recess?
Total.
Total. And then, three have 30 minutes of recess. So, I think, as a board, like, we just need to sort of look at, to make sure that we've, I mean, we would, if the policy stays at just 30 minutes, you know, we have 30 minutes of recess, we have met the bare minimum. It's just a point of reference, I guess.
So, the 45 minutes from PE count as the total for the week?
It would count, yes. It's like, if you were looking at the week-long average, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it certainly counts for, you know, I mean, it counts in the picture, and, but then we also asked about, and, you know, after-school programs count, too, so, you know, jump rope and girls on the run and cross-country count towards, you know, how we're supporting the 60 minutes. Like, we're not fully responsible for the 60 minutes by any stretch, but like, how we're supporting it, so, you know. Anyways, that's what I had for that. These ones kind of hit my jam, so. I'll let you take a backover.
Yeah, so, I think we could probably do a single motion for all five policies acknowledging Mr. Q's edit, unless people would rather break them up.
Is there input from the union?
There is no input.
Did anyone ask the librarian how they feel about?
They wrote it. The librarians wrote this policy.
There you go. Okay.
This came out of our committee work.
Is there any, like, way, can this be done by policy, to add, like, that we're not going to ban books for content into this?
I don't think we should do that.
So, this was...
Is that like a...
I wouldn't touch this policy since I sat with all the library media specialists, and they wrote this based on the American Library Association, and as well as another policy that just got passed in a surrounding district.
Okay.
So, they took that, and then they took the best practices from the American Library Association, and this is what they wrote. It took us about two and a half hours to get to this point.
It was really well-written, I thought. I mean, I think it addresses your issue, it just doesn't specifically say it.
On page two, this is just a grammar point, on the fourth bullet down on the bottom, there's an extra space in between the semicolon and stereotypes. Really didn't have the grammar.
Just looks wrong.
But let out.
Catch. Catch. Okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion, then? Or does anybody have an issue with accepting them all?
Can I ask a question about the distance education? There's, number two, it says as an option for a parent guardian or adult student making a request for distance learning. Like, is that something somebody could do? They could just request distance learning in a school?
Sure. So, relax could be an option.
So, that wouldn't mean, like, somebody can request, "I want my child to be remote." Like, that would be a different schooling.
Correct.
So, I'd like a motion to adopt the five presented policies with the edit and Mr. Q and Ms. Fitzgerald.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess, Ron, my, for the PE, the 60 to, 30 to 60 minutes, like, I, I guess, like, if I could, if, as a board, if we could, like, look at the whole picture, right, in the PE and the recess and all the extra activities, and, you know, like, so what, girls on the run is three through five for just girls, cross-country is four and five, like, perhaps we could align, like, the trimester where fourth and fifth graders only have one RE, one PE, to be like, when they also have cross-country, or like, something like that, so we are getting closer? I don't know.
Nope.
It also seems like they're going outside a lot, outside of, like...
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a scheduled recess, but, yeah, but people, people in classrooms are encouraged to go out, and quite a few do.
Yeah.
You know, I know we have the Brownwood Rec, which is in part of our school district, but that also provides offerings throughout.
And you also co-promote it for them, so...
I do promote, weekly I promote it, right, and we're always updating what the offerings are for kids.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, I was hoping for more enrichment that had physical activity, and I debated between running a ukulele club or a kickball club, and I went with ukulele, but maybe it would be kick...
Kickball.
Yeah.
Or both.
Or both.
Ukuleles and a lot of...
Yeah, at the same time, you mean? That could be, that's a good idea.
You could have the ukuleles playing for the kickballers.
Yeah.
It's a lot of supervision. I could do that.
Any board member queries or correspondences? So, the next is community engagement events, and it kind of goes with that, so Chris and I chatted very briefly on Friday about Brentwood Hawk's string about safety and security in our schools, and I think I didn't have a topic for our April newsletter post, and so I was thinking maybe that that could be, I mean, we've got it in the January, sort of what we do, thinking since you were safety and security.
But it needs to be April, like, 15.
Yes.
Can I just connect with you on, like, what?
Yep.
Content should be in it.
Sure.
So, I recommended, I, Chris and I chatted, and then I responded to the post, and I told them to call you.
Yeah, and they did.
Okay.
Yeah, I would appreciate, anytime the board member has, or hears from someone that has a question, or posts a question on Facebook, or whatever it is, I love the encouragement to give me a call, so I can try to, you know, to the point of not getting too specific, talk about our security plans and what we have in place, and there's quite a lot in place.
There's a tremendous amount in place, and that's what I basically said, that, that we have a very strong plan and program and task force, but that if she wanted specifics for Spazie, that she should call, so...
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, April budget committee.
Budget committee met last week. Everyone went over kind of what their goals were for next year, and they mostly just talked about the town. They didn't talk really about the school at all, so I assume that means we did a good job.
Okay. That's what we like to hear. And has the communications and engagement?
Yes, we did. So, we, the communications and engagement, community engagement committee met to basically plan out what that was, what that committee was going to do or be, and I've been racking my brain for the term that Dr. Aspel used of what she's going to create, but basically, she's looking to create kind of a set of goals and a plan of action for achieving those goals among different silos, like, goals along, you know, students and, and curriculum and all these different areas, and, and so what we decided in the end was that, as that overarching plan was being made, that we would work as a committee to make sure that for each silo, there was a communication portion of it and a community engagement portion of those silos, so that, as opposed to kind of doing something separately. We looked at what was presented at the joint board for the, kind of looking at the evaluation of, you know, having an outside company come in and do an evaluation of communication, and I think at this point, we feel like that was a lot of money for fairly what looked like generic recommendations, if you looked at what they recommended to other communities, but that we feel like there is a place for someone outside to come in and give us advice, and so there, so Dr. Aspel's having someone come in to give advice about this. What is the, do you know the term that I'm looking for? She had some term that she kept saying, "I'm going to create a," I don't remember what it was. She had some term that she kept saying, I'm going to create a, I don't remember what it was, but it was so, such a beautiful word, word. Huh?
Like an action, like a.
Yes, some, yeah, basically like an action plan. And so it's going to have an outside person come in and help create the action plan. And so in, as a committee, we're going to kind of work to make sure that each of those areas has a communications component, as opposed to making it a kind of separate endeavor. Because that's going to be happening anyways. So we're, plan is to actually meet again in the fall, once that action plan is more in place, to kind of say, okay, how are we going to communicate with the kids? How are we going to communicate the curriculum? How are we going to communicate scores, like, all the different sections?
Awesome. Cool. So before we move on from them, is everybody content with their committees for another year? You don't have a choice.
I enjoy this, this policy committee.
All right. So if everybody's content, we'll stay with them for another year. And will you help me remember, Chris, to, can we add the Wellness Committee on to that? All right. So Molly, you're up.
So I brought the manifest and the MS-22. So the MS-22 is the next step in the process where it zips all your warrant articles together after your annual meeting. So in the board pack is a current year financial. It does currently show in the negative position, like, as we talked about last time, as we get closer to the end of the year and have more expenses that we would revisit, either visiting the trust or the impact fees, if we want to have that discussion now.
So what happened to the fifty thousand dollars that?
We have to request it.
No, no. After the last meeting, you said that we had pre, we had, there was a health charge that we had mistakenly encumbered.
Yeah.
And it was fifty thousand dollars. You said you fixed it, it wasn't a problem, because you guys had uncovered.
That's right.
Fifty thousand dollar health.
It was encumbered last year, but it was, should have been this year.
No, the other way.
No, other way around. It was encumbered this year, but it was, it had been already paid last year.
So I believe that was part of the pack last month, that was one of the variances.
No.
It came as like an addition.
Came in late.
It came, like, two days after the last meeting.
In February, because we met, we didn't meet in March.
Yeah, we didn't, right, because we.
Yeah, it's not, it's not part of the February packet.
Because we didn't have one in March.
Right. We had our town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
I'm just trying to think of, because I thought that was the last board pack.
I think it came on Fri, Friday.
Here, do you want to hand this over to her? That's the cover sheet from last time.
Figure this out on your real.
That's the, that's our cover sheet from last February, which is the last time we met.
Those are all set. Yeah, I mean, it was definitely the, because we just approved the minutes where our budget got frozen. So it was definitely the last meeting and then we talked, like, the day after, I think, Chris, right?
Yep.
There was an email.
I'm sorry.
Oh. Do I have the, wait.
So I do remember what you're saying, it was the one that was charged, the, a different district. But then this is. Oh, no, this is just, this is just transferring it from Citizens to TD. So it wouldn't be this.
I think when we discussed it, it was that it had been accounted for last year.
Twice.
So I, and I can double-check here. So here we had, we relieved the expense of twenty thousand nine sixty-eight. I believe that's where it was counted for last, in the last board pack in January.
So the email came in on February seventh from Michelle. This is to confirm that after reviewing the encumbrances at the end of the 2122 school year, we found that in July, health trust bill should have been paid from the prior-year funds, was paid from the current-year funds. This has now been corrected and this will increase the Brentwood financial position by fifty thousand forty-one dollars. So that was on February seventh. So it sounds like that would have not carried over if it's not showing here.
I forgot about that one. So I can look into, I don't have the answer right now, but I had completely forgot about that item. And I can see whether that's recorded in revenue, which wouldn't be showing on this report, if Brentwood was reimbursed. But what I can do is I can get to the bottom of that tomorrow and send the whole board an email with that.
Thank you. Do you want me to forward this email back to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's the only way I can keep track of it.
I'll get to the bottom of that tomorrow and then send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess, to me, like, that's, needs to be sorted out before we want to probably make a decision about next, but I certainly don't want to sit negative.
I have questions about this, but then I also have a motion to make. I think we should use impact fees.
So I, I don't disagree if we need them. What I don't want is to take our, take the impact fees into our budget and then return them at the end of the year to the town. Like, I want to use the impact fees for a project in the school. And so if we end up with this fifty thousand dollars back in our budget and we don't need the impact fees to pay for the project that is currently targeted for them, then that, if we accept that money, it just goes back to our budget and then it gets returned to the town. And so the school is losing the impact.
Won't that happen every year, though?
Not if we use it for, for a specific capital improvement project.
But that's what we would be using it for, right?
I guess, what is the difference between using it for this and having money left over in our budget at the end of the year and using it for something else and having money left over in our budget at the end of the year, a different year?
I guess I'd rather use the impact fees for a project.
I think we've already spent the money for the, for the project out of our operating budget.
Right.
Can you even use them retroactively?
Yeah.
You always have to charge it out of your operating budget.
To me, because we had, there was multiple unanticipated projects that happened this year, it would make sense to me to use them for this, because hopefully, like, that's kind of like an odd, oddity that.
Right, but then they're gone, and if we didn't actually need them, then we just lose the money towards a new project. Like, if we need the money, I'm all for accepting the fees. Like, if, if, if we are at this amount, then we should absolutely accept the fees. I completely agree. But if we have fifty thousand dollars in the account and we don't think we need the fees and we accept them, then we're just accepting them to return them.
Yeah. So if we accept the fees and then we get fifty thousand dollars and we have this chunk of money, we can't spend it?
Well, we've already, we've, we've spent it on the project that we already did.
We can only accept the impact fees for the capital improvement project. So, so we have not seen you all since Letty and I trumps around town sorting this out.
Going to all the meetings.
We did a lot of meetings. But we met with Karen and Glenn and.
Gordon.
Gordon, the district lawyer. And there was no meeting, there was no compromise there. And so we left that meeting without the ability to use impact fees still, with the exception that if we could get our project on to the town's capital improvement plan, then we could use our impact fees. And so.
We did.
We did. So we, the police chief wrote us up a project description. We had it on the planning meeting for the week of February vacation, whatever that date was. Letty went to the meeting and.
They approved it.
They approved it. So the project was put on our capital improvement plan so we can pull the impact fees if we need them. And in the future, we can use our impact fees as long as we have capital improvement projects on the town plan. And so that is something that we have to do, is relook at our capital improvement plan and make sure that we have some projects that we want to get done and we need to get them into the town so that this doesn't happen again.
But to circle back around to this, we can pull the, the impact fees into our budget to cover this loss right now because we already paid for something?
Yes, to pay for the, to pay for the, and we, and the town has also offered us, the police offered us ten thousand of their impact fees, which the select board approved, to also help fund it.
So if we don't pull that money in, can we pull the ten thousand in from the police in to help our budget, just right now? Without pulling out.
We can pull anything into our budget. It's been approved.
I guess, again, this is like moving money from one bucket. If we don't pull them in now, they're sitting somewhere and they have to be used at some point or they go back to the developers.
For sure, but not, they're not, they don't expire this year.
So they just sit and wait and to see if we have another big project?
Well, we do have, we have a number of capital improvement projects on our five-year plan anyways that haven't been done.
So they'd be saved for those projects instead of to pay for something that's really already been paid for? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Already been paid for and our bottom line is currently a negative number.
And I completely agree with you.
Kind of.
If, if, but we don't have an answer for the fifty thousand dollars.
Well, and I have other questions about the budget in general.
All right, let's go to that.
There's a, there's a big special ed increase. Is that something that you think we're going to need to budget for next year as well? Is that, is that amount just for the rest of this school year?
So we always encumber until the end of the year when known, so, Ron, I don't know if you want to speak to the needs?
Yeah, I believe that we added those needs into next year's budget.
Okay. So that, I, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that was, this was in addition to that.
And that's like for the, that's the rest of the year, that, that amount. It won't be next month.
Like, are we going to get twenty-three thousand more next month?
That I don't know.
So we always encumber until the end of the year, but it's on the school that puts in the purchase order. So as long as the purchase order was put in for the whole year, it's always.
I guess I have a question. So both this line then and that media services line, the media services line, I'm assuming is, that's the position we found that was incorrectly budgeted for last year or this year? Or is that something different?
I don't think it was incorrectly budgeted, but we, we adjusted the encumbrance for the current year. The encumbrance was off.
Just the media aid.
Wasn't there, wasn't that the one where we thought it was a half person, but it was a full position or three-quarters of?
It's three days a week.
And we had only budgeted for two?
I don't recall why it wasn't budgeted correctly.
But that's that. So I guess my question is, when we discovered that missed budget in November or whenever we were making our budget, why didn't we encumber it then?
Well, we always encumber what's known at the time, so this would have been adjustments or adjustments to the persons, what they're working.
So this is a new adjustment, then?
Correct. It's a new adjustment since last month. So we always encumber to the end of the year when it's known, but when people are hourly, it goes up and down, or if they don't work full-time, it goes up and down.
Okay. So these are both things, then, that we knew were coming, but we just hadn't seen them in the budget yet?
Well, we have encumbered what we knew, so like last month, when this was fair, we encumbered what we knew at the time for the media specialist, so this would have been a change since then. We always encumber all positions till the end of the year.
So the position had been encumbered already, but then there was additional hours worked. And so it came through. Is that, am I understanding that?
No, I guess, I'm just confused because we knew that in October. Does that make sense? When we made our budget.
From February.
This is a change since the last time we did it. So there was some sort of change in the, either the person's contract, the person's number of hours.
Okay.
Public comment's closed. Do they have anything else? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I wish I could be more helpful, the person in that role. And the role's always been that sixty percent.
Right. I guess that's why I'm trying to figure out if it's always been the sixty percent, why it's changing now. And is it, is this encumbrance correct and accurate, just because of these lines? My other question was, the line for substitutes doesn't match the current period line for substitutes? So I was curious.
So the current period's always the month?
Yep.
So this is the change since the last board pack?
So this is two months, basically.
So this would be possibly two months, but we always run it in the middle of the month. So current month's always the month that you're in.
So it's not going to, it's not always going to be, okay. Okay. And then operations of plant, generator work and cleanorama. What generator did we work on?
So the generator that has, houses are, if the electricity goes off for our kitchen, there's eighteen hundred dollars worth of repairs that need to go since it went out. So.
Why do we need that?
Because if we lose electricity, which we've done a couple of times this year.
Oh, it's, it's just for the refrigerators, it's not for anything else.
Refrigerator and it's security lighting in the building and one other area that the generator.
Okay, because I know that, I didn't think of the school.
Do other elementary schools have full school generators?
No.
And then cleanorama?
Just the cleaning services that we have, yeah, mops.
But it's more than, more than we expected for some reason?
So that would have just been an added purchase order. So we, we, what's in your encumbrance is all open purchase orders, so someone had to open.
So if there's a new one, okay, gotcha.
Okay. Molly, where are the two big maintenance projects that we've just done? I couldn't find them anywhere in the budget.
This is what I don't understand. I understand it's different from last time.
I believe they were in the maintenance project line, so a reported period that is year-to-date, where it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Page five of seven.
Okay.
So we have, and.
But we're not, okay, so that's why it didn't point out to me, because we're not over budget there.
That's because we had, we had budgeted the paving in that line.
And then you pulled forward the paving last year?
Yeah.
For personnel, which is showing in different lines?
Yes.
So what we pulled forward is over in different lines and then the new projects came into here.
Okay.
So I guess for me, going forward, if we realize, like, I'm going to use the media aid as an example, if we realize that we have budgeted incorrectly, if we could just make sure that we adjust the encumbrance as soon as we know that.
And we always do. This would have been something else. So like for aids, for example, when we get closer to the end of the year, if we realize people are working differently than what they have, we always, we always make the change when we know it.
Okay.
So I guess what Letty's getting at, though, is that Ron says that she works sixty hour, sixty percent and she always has and. So I guess what Letty's getting at though, is that Ron says that she works 60 hour, 60% and she always has and has been. So Ron's saying nothing changed. So I guess where's the $5,000 coming from?
I can double check what we receive, either receive from human resources. Um, we always leave the encumbrance for what their letter of intent or contract says. So if someone has been working more, then as soon as we're notified, we make that change. But I can act, I can look to see what came down the pipeline for that.
Chris's media aides, is that part of the union?
The teacher?
No, the par union. Media aide.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. There's a certain, like the office is not.
Mediate is.
Person is not.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So I, I don't know if that changed anything with that particular role.
It shouldn't till next year, right?
And I can check specifically what was the change, but as soon as we're made aware of change in human resources, whether someone's increasing their hours, decreasing their hours, or if towards the end of the year, we typically see if if the contractor letter of intent wasn't changed, are they trending over? Are they trending less? The position's always set up for a amount of time. Um, and if you work more, it's only encumbering the remaining as if you're working what you're supposed to work.
So if we.
To be transparent, this person worked an extra day during the book fair, but that's not what we're talking about.
No.
This number would not correspond to that.
Just letting you know.
I'll look to exactly what that changes for that person, but we always encumber and when we know the expenses happen.
Cause I know that when we were presenting the budget, that was one of the lines that looked like it was really high, but it wasn't because it was just inaccurately budgeted for this year.
So we're gonna get a follow-up on the $50,000 health bill and the media aide.
Okay. And just to be clear, this is that we're projecting to be running low at the end of the year by 11,000.
Kind of.
And over appropriation.
Right now, but so not like here in March, we're in the negative, but we're projecting that if we continue with what we're doing, we'll be in the negative.
Correct. So it's, it includes all encumbrances. And that includes, just I feel like this, like you throw something at us, is that includes, um, the money we took from the trust fund last month?
We didn't.
We didn't.
We haven't taken any.
Because we got that email saying that we were good.
We voted that if we needed it.
Okay.
So we didn't.
So did that, it's not come out yet. So that would be like the first step?
No.
First step is the $50,000.
It, but if the 50,000 is.
Then I think we have to discuss it as a board. Cause we have choices.
We have some choices. Do you, what makes you most comfortable right now? Do you want us to make a motion to give you some authority to do something if the $50,000 was a farce? I don't know where to go with this.
So I, Ron's sitting on technology for kids replacement till we knew what we had in our budget to go forward. That's, that's where I sit right now, is how we can continue to support him and will a month out, you know.
What line is that?
Well, as long as we can create a PO in a month.
I mean, we can do a purchase order and be in the next, until we know how much we need.
Right, I just know of our practices, in April, we start kind of, start.
Ron, I'm only speaking for myself, but I think I represent everybody that will give you whatever money you need to run the school.
Right.
And we have options on where that money is going to come from. And I think that's really the only question. Do we take it out of the maintenance trust fund? Do we get, take, bring in the impact fees? Do we do, do we need both?
Yeah, I just know that we, to keep up with our technology plan.
Yep.
Uh, there's a grade level that's moving on. That, that's the year that they're gonna get, uh, brand-new Chromebooks. And then the ones that they're using and are working, those go to the library and to the steam lab. I would just like to be able to stick with that process and not wait for the July funds.
How much is that PO?
That's, it's, the total is 16. There's only $10,000 left in the line that I'm pulling from. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't go over the, what's in the line and I would find other funds.
What line is that?
It's the replacement technology.
Computer services, replacement equipment?
Yes. I just want to look at it before I say yes. Yes, computer services replacement equipment has $10,178.
There's also 6,000 in computer services new equipment.
This is replacement though.
But it's buying a new thing.
Buying new.
So like, so I personally.
We could do the whole.
I personally would feel comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it regardless. I just, it, it doesn't matter how much money is in those lines. The overall is the problem right now.
Right.
So, so even if we have the $50,000 that supposedly we have, we're still, that brings us to 39,000. We put, we put, whatchamacallit, uh, warrant articles in for 30,000 of unintended, of un.
But that's not going to be a problem because we have 36 right now of revenue.
Okay. And so.
Right, is that, is that accurate?
Um, and so this is another 16, so that, so, all right, I'll take the 30 out. So we have another 11 plus another 16 is 27,000.
One more.
Okay. Don't be shy!
Oh, I won't be. I'm just trying to be nice about it and just kind of ease into it. We'd like to continue up with the process for replacing, um, books in the library. There's still $5,000 that wasn't purchased that we had budgeted for, for that.
Okay.
So I'd like to be able to have our library and go ahead and make those purchases too.
And the books and other printed media.
That brings us up to like 32,000. Um, so. So even if we get that 50,000, we're still left at like $15,000 left in our budget for the year. And we're at April. So where's the comfort level with that?
As long as we have $1 on June 30th, I am super comfortable.
Which we can do.
Last month, what was the?
Because.
We don't encumber for substitutes because we never know how much.
Right, but like, if we get to June, like we have several trust funds that if things get really dire, we can pull from. Even if we've pulled from all the other places.
We have $60,000 worth of impact fees. So can we just get answers and then make a vote in G, in April? Is everybody comfortable with that?
How about in May, though?
Oh, yeah, May, not April. But I'm totally cool with you spending, making, submitting those purchase orders personally.
That's just where we wanted to go before we did that.
Is it, are you guys?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that, again, it's, it's like, I think, I personally think the conversation's silly, right? Like, because we don't need the money right this second. We have money right this second. We are saying we're gonna get, make sure the money's there. We're trying, we're like, should we pull it from our left pocket or our right pocket? But we don't need to put it to the banker yet, you know, so like we can choose when we need to.
That's how I feel too.
What's going on. I mean, we can continue talking circles around it though. That's fun.
I think we're just trying to understand. It's not like. And so I'll email you the answers to those two questions tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else need anything from Molly?
The other thing is, is, um, contracts. Are we gonna hand sign those? Or Michelle asked me to get the Blanks signature template if we didn't want to hand sign.
Yeah, we'll.
I hand signed them last year.
Yeah, and I have them here with me tonight, so they can be signed, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, Molly. Energy commission.
Sure. Um, we met last on March 13th. Um, Dr. Bonifidi lives there, Letty was there with myself, Ron and Rick LaBarr. Rick has been a fabulous resource. Um, he's basically doing a, a huge analysis of the cost of the project, making sure everything lines up, looking at, um, different opportunities. So we meet again on Monday, April 17th. Where we're going to kind of look at Rick's analysis. We also, another big concern that's come out is just making sure that the roof is, is in good standing order before we do anything up there. And then we're, we're gonna start talking about who's the different stakeholders. We're gonna need to bring, come into the meetings so that we have more voices and, and hear different, um, points of view on, on what we're trying to do. And then, um, we'll also look at bond payments. It's tough. So I'll have to work with Molly on when the timing would be of what bond payments would look like. If that's an avenue that we'd go through rather than to have to go from an investor, which we don't get the full capacity. And the investor gets the federal rebate. We would not get that federal 30% off, so it's kind of where we're at. So we're waiting on Rick and I think the next meeting will have a, a really good understanding of where we're at and what we need to do and identify more stakeholders to, um, start having further conversations with. And I leave it to Kate and Letty if there was anything I missed. Ron?
Great.
No, that's it.
We, we actually did talk a little bit about the fact that the school does not have a generator.
Playground, equipment installation.
Yeah, it's right out there, so.
The kids love playing on it. It's so much fun.
They're playing on it out there.
So we're just waiting for one, uh, netting cargo piece to come in. That was the only piece that didn't come with it. Um, but it is scheduled right now, um, to come here in April vacation is when Rusty is looking to have it installed. So hopefully when kids return after April, uh, the new equipment will be out there and installed. Also during April vacation is when the fire alarm will be, um, upgraded and replaced. So that project will be done when kids get back. And the repeater, it's on order, um, so that looks like a mid-April installation as well. So the big projects, all after April vacation should be completed. Great, so you get the panel and the strobes. Is that it? The fire panel, yeah.
Just a question. This is like a stupid thing probably. With the playground equipment, um, something we're ha, coming across at the club is we're like making all these great changes to the building. And even though they're great changes, some of the kids are having, have a really hard time with it because it's a change. So is that something like, we could tell, communicate with the kids before they go on break? Like when you come back, it's a new slide, the bees won't be in it, like whatever.
But maybe it was their favorite slide, even with the bees, right?
So like, it's just something we've come across.
I don't know if there's big changes with the equipment, like what's, what's coming down? Does it look different? Or is it just replaced like perfectly? Is it just like coating that's replaced? So I mean, I could work with Rusty to kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've just like, we've done like really, and kids are like, but I like, where, I can't trip on the gym floor now, like, it's just like the change.
No, you can't. You can't trip anymore.
I don't know, it's just like maybe not.
So I'm glad you're saying it, because I, nobody has said, nobody has said anything to me about changes. And so was there another change that somebody brought up?
No.
No, just even if it's, even if it's still the same shaped slide, if it's a different color, like literally, like liter, like that is how small children feel.
Yeah. Like when we were painting things, they're like, it didn't, it didn't scare them or freak them out, but they were like, wow.
Yeah, like really.
So it was like a cool surprise, but.
It looks awesome.
If it's, if it's something that's completely different, I would, I'll give my head to it. Maybe we'll talk about it at the shindig, take some pictures. Be like, guess what's coming? You know those yellow steps? Because we, yes, red steps. They won't notice the fire panel. I'll tell you.
No, they will not.
They will not know. Reese will.
And so for the capital improvement plan, can, should we just put that on the next agenda? To review what's on there and discuss what we should add?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have to go out another couple of years, right?
Yeah. I mean, there are a few things on there that have not, still been done, so we have some stuff. But we should re-look at it and then get it to, to Glenn, to, or Karen, Karen.
Well, I like that, like if we're talking about utilizing the impact fees, it's like the same conversation.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Would we use the same forms we used la, uh, four years ago?
So they do it every year.
One of the conversations at BudCon was that we need to sort of refresh that whole.
So I will say that the CIP happens every year. So the fact that you're saying four years ago just means that we've been out of the loop for a couple of years. But that way, as our needs change or as we are able to do things through other means, then we can update.
Yeah.
To stay current.
All right, so it will go on the May meeting. Ron, you're up.
Yay. So I was just gonna speak from this, but I, sometimes it's better for you to kind of follow along. Just an update on professional development for SWEEZIE staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have on our budget for staff to each get by contract $750 with professional development. But where they choose to spend that money comes from the goals that they develop through our portrait of an educator system. The, our teachers make professional goals every year based on skills, knowledge and mindset. And that's the same for all the other schools in the SAU. And the system is asset-based. So if they want feedback about something particular that they're doing in their classroom or their practice, because it's not just classroom teachers. I know a lot of time we think of staff as the teacher in front of the students and, uh, it's a variety of people who set goals for themselves and need feedback from a variety of people, not just myself or Katie. So it's set up so at least one of the feedback sessions comes from an administrator. And the other one comes from maybe their grade level peers or maybe when they're presenting at a meeting and those types of conversations. I, I think I'm pointing this part out, not so much for the supervision or evaluation process, but more about how do our staff decide what professional development that they want to choose to go to? So if they have goals in reading and math or science instruction, those are the types of things that, you know, I couldn't agree more that that's a perfect place for them to go. So, so when they choose to go to these conferences or workshops, it's based on goals and the things that they're working for at SWEEZIE. And really the conference and going to workshops kind of was peaking before the pandemic. And then, of course, nobody was going anywhere, nothing was being offered, everything. And a lot of things now aren't so much going, but attending through virtual workshops. So a lot of that is happening. And, you know, I could, I didn't list all the different varieties of what our staff is choosing. It kind of highlighted some of the things that are, uh, that we provide and is also job embedded. Our PLCs is a great example. We meet weekly with a variety of people, um, working together to look at data, inform one another about practice. People come in. So I kind of call that professional development. Kate of five, our classroom teachers have been going, um, about every six weeks to something called empowered math. The other elementary schools, uh, are in their second year of this. I wanted our teachers not to miss out on this. It is not a ready math type of workshop. It gives a variety of options and instructional practices. We wanted to give it a try. Our teachers have been going to that. It's half-day professional development. So there's about six sessions that they've gone to. I think the beauty of it is our teachers get to go to other buildings, meet other staff, see what's going on, see what it looks like. Come back here and tell us how great SWEEZIE is compared to everything else. But that's, that is kind of a one and done for this year. We're not going to continue with that. But, um, that's one example of our staff development. For DEIJ, we have plans moving, well, we had good plans, uh, prior to some weather. So some workshops that are being offered for our staff is responding with empathy. Classroom libraries and equity, inclusive classroom space and materials. So, uh, it's a couple of our staff members at each of these groups presenting to people who've signed up for those aspects. That's through our DEIJ committee. Katie has been leading that charge, but the reins have really been ripped out of her hands by the whole group. The whole group is kind of in charge of what's going on with that. And of course, the whole SAU was going to have training in implicit bias. So all the administrators were going to take a variety of staff members throughout the district to provide that training. We also, uh, the administrators sat in on how to facilitate challenging conversations. You don't have to be an expert to have, to lead people in, what did you think of the video? What did you think of the essay that was written in the article? What did you think of the screening you took about implicit bias? So that's been rescheduled for the fall. Our teachers have been working on writing rubrics. been working on writing rubrics, and that's for narrative writing, persuasive writing, opinion writing. And what we're doing is aligning what kids are expected to do in kindergarten, and then when they move on to first grade. So we're not like making a huge leap. A K is here and first grade expects this when they come in. So those conversations have gone on for the last three or four weeks. We have, Chris, I don't know if it's five or six teachers at Swayze have been participating in this SNU graduate leadership program, which the, the end result is having your certification in CAGS, but it's all about leadership classes. So there's a variety of staff members have been doing that. Some of the workshops we've had at our school is during a staff meeting, we had some folks come in and talk about pans and pandas, and how this could be the reason behind some students that have unexpected anxiety and challenges coming into school. So that was really helpful. Our own Mrs. Bradley put on a mindfulness workshop for our staff, and she's been doing it. She did some for our families here. She's also gone to different schools. She'll go anywhere because she, and she's really, really good at it. So that was, that was fantastic. And that was right at the beginning of our year. Our K to three teachers have all been trained in foundations, which is our phonics program for the primary grades. We have suicide prevention that our counselor, Pippi McNally, is providing for our staff. And Pippi's also provided for our paras a variety of workshops. And one of them was trauma-centered support. So when you're dealing with students with behaviors, understanding where that might be coming from and trauma, and how that trauma has affected the brain. So it's been a fascinating kind of understanding. Not so much in the realm of staff development, but I just thought we'd kind of give you an update on SEL. Continuing teaching with Slide Five. Our counselor's been attending our PLC meetings every month. It's part of the rotation. That was the plan for a couple of years, and this year it's really happening. So on, on the last week of our PLCs, we have conversations about what the needs are as far as whether it's whole grade level or specific students that need some support. We are going to be investing in the holistic student assessment. CMS is also using this, and we thought it would be a great transition. The good thing about this SEL assessment is students do it on themselves. They self-reflect on, and again, I haven't, I haven't seen it and Katie's taking the charge on this, but it's a 15-minute self-report, and students talk about how do they, do they feel like they belong in school? What challenges do they have? We'll get some information. We'll be able to make some determinations about how to support these students based on the information they're giving us. We think it's going to be more helpful than the DESA that we've been giving for the last five or six years in grades two and four. So we're really excited about doing this, and it's also that transition into CMS. So that's, that's the staff development. I have a few other things to talk about. I don't want to hold everybody up, but do you have any questions about any of the work that the teachers are doing?
What's CAGS again?
CAGS is certifi, graduate study.
After graduate studies.
So it's the certification for superintendent. So maybe we'll have five superintendents in the building.
They're either taking their principal certification or their curriculum coordinator certification through that, through the program through SNU.
So Chris, I want to talk a little bit about our end of the year.
Yeah.
And our, our dates and have a conversation with our board.
Sure.
Can I ask one question, Ron? Because I thought maybe it would be covered in this, and I don't want to steal your thunder if it was going to be covered somewhere else. But I understand that the co-op changed their PD format to two full days. And I know that Kensington does it for two full days. And I think it's a really great idea.
What, your what? I'm sorry.
So the co-op approved instead of half-day PDs, full-day PDs.
Right.
And they just.
What are PDs?
Like the professional development. So not like the conference days, but the professional development days that we approve. And the co-op approved it for the Friday before Indigenous Peoples' Day. So it becomes a four-day weekend. And then, which I think is a great idea. I don't, I don't love their second one, but they approved it for the Friday before February vacation, which I sort of prefer like the Friday before MLK or something like that personally. But I think I would love your opinion on having full days versus half-days.
Yep. So I'm glad you brought it up. I'm not prepared to talk about all the specific dates, but I met with the elementary principals, and we're trying to get on board with some of these full days. The majority of those schools aren't just getting rid of all the half-days, they're getting rid of some of them. So it's not a complete trade-off of no half-days. But I'm certainly in agreement with adding those three full days. And I could provide the dates, probably do that.
At our next meeting.
It's not too late at our next meeting.
Okay, okay.
But that's something that we did want to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll have a full calendar for you for our May meeting and the rationale behind it. But as Ron said, all the elementary school principals came together to find common days. So when we do professional development, we can share teachers and we can share resources.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I guess my, my instinct about that February, just for you to take back to whoever, is that some parents already have to struggle to juggle a week of their kids home. And adding another day seems like maybe that is not the most parent-friendly day personally. I don't know of other people, but I know that Kensington has been doing this, right? This year, the Kensington does it, and it seems quite popular. So I would have.
Yes. They, they have, their other PD was, or their professional development days was on Fridays. They still have half-days. And again, they're going to make a recommendation for no half-days. It'll be full days based on a survey.
Now, as far as half-days, many of the schools have more of those half-days. And I just wanted to make sure that we have everything in line for our conferences.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And kind of work through that schedule with our staff and with Chris.
How did the conference, like, did you get feedback? Like, did people like not have it, feedback in October? And like, have, do we have?
I've just heard, I've heard positive about that kind of dual opportunity at the beginning of the year to hear from their kids setting goals. I think the follow-up is coming up with our showcases of learning for our upper grades. They're really kind of going full circle from the goals I set with my parents or my caregivers and my classroom teacher to that showcase. And I, I haven't heard a lot of feedback about the January conference, so I'm assuming it was positive.
I guess I just, I've heard a little bit of feedback, and I have the same feedback, that it felt like a really, really long time without valuable feedback to start at the beginning of the year and not really get feedback until January.
Yeah.
So I don't have the issue with the model. I think that some adjustment in the model so that there is a little bit more feedback in the fall would be helpful. I mean, it really just went really, I mean, for me, we got really no feedback until January. I mean, I find that difficult.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would encourage parents, all parents, if they want to set a conversation with a classroom teacher and get some updates, that they don't have to wait between those windows. That if somebody wants to reach out and say, can we have a quick conversation on how things are going? It could be in person. It could be in Zoom or a phone call. So I know our, our teachers are, you know, happy to have those types of conversations. We're trying to empower kids to kind of really take a charge in that. And I think during, again, I'm trying to think back to the fall when we are setting it out, we wanted to make sure that parents knew that they needed to set some time to have a one-on-one conversation with the, the classroom teacher. That they could definitely do that.
So I guess, I guess for me, like, so is the, is it called a time vault? Is that what they're calling it? Oh. But like, it seemed like a lot of work was being saved for the January meeting. I don't know. Yeah. For me personally, I didn't know that there were questions I should have been asking until January. And so I would, I guess I just think that I wouldn't want to leave it purely to parents to ask questions if they had concerns, if there was some other way to get a, I mean, we've moved a lot of parent feedback out, right? We used to get four report cards plus have a fall and a spring conference. Now we get two report cards. Only one of them happens during the school year. So one of them is, is post, you know, anything adjust, any adjustments. And then we also got rid of a fall conference where there was feedback. And so it just seems like there's a lot of stuff being taken away from, and I don't disagree, the kids can be responsible for it, but I don't think, I don't know. It just seems like there's a lot. And I have heard other people feel the same way.
Yeah. And it's, it is a change. It's something for people to kind of consider. I hear what you're saying too. And again, I would, I, I know that I don't have teachers that would refuse a conversation about any concerns of people.
And I'm not debating that.
I think it's.
I just didn't know that I needed a conversation until I had a conference. And so there was, there's missing an opportunity to get that information. So I'm not debating that teachers are happy to, absolutely.
Right.
I just think that we should look at the parent feedback loop. And, and are there spaces where we've pulled a lot of information that parents used to get? And, you know, are there spaces to make other little tweaks so that there's like a happy compromise? Not asking for more work on the teachers. I just, it seems to me, you know, I'm not pointing you, but I know Kate feels the same way about the report cards. But there's a lot of information that I used to find valuable that has gone away. And so, you know, can we find some space where there's some feedback?
To that point, I mean, I think I have very quiet children. You would never guess it because I'm not very quiet. But I get zero feedback. So if you're expecting like my kids to give me anything about what's happening at school, until I was told I can't go to this meeting tonight because Swayze is already practically perfect from Anderson, I have heard nothing about like what goes on in school. You know, it's, but also, you know, it's interesting, even with my fourth grader, I don't like get test grades back. I don't see like, oh, here's your math and you only got a 75 on it. Right? Because that's just not the way that like the rhythm of the class is. So I don't know. Like, I don't, like, I blissfully go along figuring that if something isn't going right, someone will let me know. And I don't know that, I mean.
We send screenings home three times a year. As far as diagnostics, I would, I'm trying to blend what our philosophy is and what we're trying to accomplish with empowering students. If you look at our competency-based model, number one on that list is empowering students to make decisions in classrooms. And I, I'm not kind of belittling the importance of kind of keeping parents in the loop of what's going on. We did kind of move from two student-led conferences last year to one student-led goals conference and a typical traditional conference. So we thought, and we did that also because of questions about the report card. So we on purpose provided that conference time right on the heels of the report card or the progress report coming out. So if there are any questions that came up about the marks that were going on with competency, that would be a good time to talk about it. But.
Yeah. I guess, you know, Kate's point. So, so if we're empowering students, okay? And this isn't you or Swayze. This is the district. If we're empowering students though, like, we're, they're not being given like their test scores to come home and say, hey, look how great I did. You know, can I go over and show you my work? Right? Like that, we're not getting that work home. And they don't get a report card themselves. Like, we're not empowering them with their current report cards at all. Like, they come in an email and the kids don't understand them. So I hear you. And this is not you, Ron, and it's not Swayze. I think that, I think that it's a challenge, that, that it's a growing challenge, and there's a change challenge. But I think that sometimes we're changing without collecting valuable feedback from parents. That doesn't require a parent to come complain. Right? Like, it's fine if you don't like what you want, or you don't feel like you're getting what you want, call me. But like a lot of parents, that's not, that's not their comfort zone. And so like, I would love personally to know how parents feel about like the goal conference where you set goals but didn't get a check-in with how your teacher, how your student's doing then. Or the January conference being the only like feedback. Like, I would like to know how parents feel without them feeling as though they may have to like complain.
I also think it's different in different grade. Like, second grade, I get every piece of work that is done home every week. So I think it's a difference between grade levels, and maybe that's intentional as the kids get older, they can, but there's a difference.
Well, see, and again, we're talking about paper orders that come home. A lot of the work that our grade three, four, and five kids are doing are on the Chromebook. That they, you know, if, then again, I'm not even quite sure if students can access.
They can get in at home.
That account at home and share some of the work that they're doing on a regular basis. We have seesaw, which teachers do comment on as kids are utilizing that. And again, it doesn't mean everybody's required to do like four or five seesaws every week, but that's just another aspect. But I hear what you're saying. We want teachers to be invited, rather caregivers to be given, you know, the avenues to understand what's going on here at school for their child. And I would like to figure out what that would look like.
Right. That's all, I guess, I'm asking.
I hear you.
And I think that there's something missing. And I felt that way, except for that, then when I had my conference in January, I was like, oh, I was, I missed something. And so I wished that I had had an opportunity. And I have heard that from other people. And so I just think that there's other pieces that I, and it wasn't glaring. It wasn't big. It's just something that I would have loved to have known.
And, you know, in the traditional world, all right, you would have a conference, and I don't know how much we know about anybody in the first four weeks. Okay? So the conference usually happens the second week of October, at least in all the schools I've ever worked at. And then you don't have a real traditional conference again until April. So there's a, there's always a big, long span where you're not kind of invited to come in, but you need to be informed. And report cards, I don't, in my opinion, even since, you know, when I was teaching or hit or miss, it doesn't, it doesn't capsulize what's going on in the classroom or the relationships we have or the themes that are going on. I think we're trying to open up our doors a little bit more, like with the showcases and those types of things. But I want to invite that kind of conversation to happen because it's so much good going on here, too.
There's, there is awesome good. There's, yeah, I totally agree. I just, I feel a little, as a parent, I feel a little distanced from it right now. I think more and more things are, I just think there's a room for improvement, I guess. That is the moral of the story.
So for the next meeting, would you have Ron, myself, and Katie kind of talk about that feedback piece that you feel is missing to get some information to be able to.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm just saying, like, are, do other people feel the same way?
So we don't know, right?
We don't, the answer, we don't know.
Because it's a different model.
Right.
And if that model's working, then we'll be able to give you that, that data. And if it's not working, then we'll give you that data and say, this is what we'd like to do.
Right.
So we've, we've heard it, so we've got that.
Great.
So quickly, we, we closed the school down a couple of days because there's no power here. So I think what would be an appropriate plan moving forward is the SAU's students' last day is Thursday, the 15th. We would have our students come to Swayze through the end of that week, Friday. And then we make that the last day. To kind of expect students to come back on that Monday. We have plenty of instructional hours that are in place. And that would, in doubt, we're going to have any power closings between now and the end of the year. Right, exactly. So I'm sorry.
Hey, we don't need to rebuy a bunch of food.
So it would just be the 16th.
So, and for the staff, Monday is a holiday. It's Juneteenth. So we would not have our staff back then. We would want our staff to come back in person on Tuesday to work a full day, have a staff meeting that morning. Of course, we would offer that for our parrot professionals who have lost some time. So we would offer that experience as well for them. However, to make up the next day, what I would kind of propose is we would send something out to our. we would send something out to our staff that are covered under the collective bargaining agreement and say, here are a menu of options, and I would like to hear some of your thoughts about at-home work that you can do and demonstrate prior to the end of the school year. I know our teachers are doing it. I know that they're reading professional materials. I know they're looking at webinars. I know they're collaborating. So I would just ask them and provide them a way to document what that looks like. And that would satisfy the expectation of the contract for work here.
Like over April break, whatever, whenever they want.
It could be April break, it could be a weekend day.
So they would have to demonstrate the seven hours of work for professional learning before the 21st. Or the 20th, yeah. Or if not, they would have to come into work on that Wednesday.
They would come, everyone's there the 20th, you break down a clock, whatever.
Correct, that's the Tuesday.
The 21st would be.
Yeah, unless.
Or if they want, or if they wanted to take that day to further.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do you need a vote of mass friend?
We would like a motion on that.
I have a question. Is Juneteenth a paid holiday for the paras?
No, because it's after the school year.
Correct.
Is it?
So the, the, I don't know, it's not under current contract, no.
Okay, so we wouldn't, okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember.
It doesn't kick in until the next school year.
Just checking.
But holidays in the summer where then, when there's no school, wouldn't qualify anyways, right?
No.
So I'm happy to make a motion to accept a floating PD day, is that what?
Yeah, so I could put it, so a motion we'd like is for the last day for students to be on Friday, June 16th, with the teachers' last day to be on Tuesday, June 20th, with the caveat that they need to demonstrate seven hours of professional learning on their own before June 20th. If they have not, then they would need to come to work on the 21st to fulfill their contract.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just quickly to kind of sum it up, it's busy after before school. It's been great. We have jump rope, talent show's coming May 3rd at the high school. Check it out if you can make it.
Is that, sorry, just really quick, is that event open to the public?
Yes.
Do you want to put something about that in the newsletter as well? Because I know that we're, that would be another good way for people to engage with our school.
And we have a venue that will fit everybody.
Yes.
And it should be entertaining.
Yes. That's the hope. Because I'm a producer, so it's entertaining. Take apart, Mr. Schroeder's here three mornings a week. He's coming back this week, too. Robotics, which is getting extended because of some competitions.
It's awesome. The robotics club is the best thing ever.
Well, Mrs. Brown asked me last week, she goes, do you want a Swayze Robotics Club, like, swag? And I was like, well, you know, I'm not in the robotics, I'll say pass. And she showed it to me today, I'm like, oh, I gotta have that.
Well, that will be cool, but how they'll wear it with pride is going to be even better because it's the coolest club in the entire world.
Well, ukulele club I heard is the best one.
But they are doing robotics all the time. They are coming in and doing it at lunch with her. I mean, it is like very cool.
No, no, it's very, very cool, and we want to keep tending for.
Well, I think, I think, I don't know, Ron, you maybe can answer this. It's a state program.
Correct.
It's not a Swayze program. Swayze is participating in a state grant. And it's very skill-based. So this current one, I don't think probably could be, but perhaps there's other options.
Jacka out of Manchester, it does level first, their first robotics. Because if it is, they have programs that go from pre-K through.
I don't, it's a grant, I don't know what it is. Do you know what it is?
It was not, no.
Yeah, it's a grant that Mrs. Brown got.
But there are maybe other programs we could look into for younger grades.
Yeah.
Then we'd really stack the deck when they got to the big kids, right? Like, if we can train them.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're like, there's 65 teams in New Hampshire, and the Swayze teams are in third and fifth place right now. And if they are second and fifth place, and if they finish in the top three, they get to go to an in-person competition. So it's really cool.
Can you guys add that to the newsletter? Because I think some of the younger kids may like to see the competitions if it's able to have outside people come to it.
Yeah, Mrs. Brown's really good about giving me information about going on the STEAM lab, so.
Maybe we can put it in a Friday.
Love to.
Yeah, awesome.
Math club and ukulele, like I mentioned before.
Is there still a chess club?
There's not. Would you like one?
I've got chess pieces on my socks.
Oh, cool.
You're qualified.
You're ready.
That's qualification season.
That's a sign that I don't want to play chess against you. Wouldn't have a chance, no chess. I get my socks are chess king. Get that reference, anybody? Okay. So Swayze is in the third stage of working with the New Hampshire Eddies Committee, and they're coming this Friday morning. And I have still open invitation. I know we all have busy schedules, so if you can make it, you're more than welcome to attend when they arrive at 8:30 and be here through our introductory kind of presentation from 9:00 to 9:20. Love for you to say hello. Allison, maybe even say, you know, a quick hi when we get started and talking about. Katie and I are just going to quickly kind of sum up who we are again and like have a short little video. And then it's going to be, they're going to tour the school on their own. They can visit classrooms and music and art and all the classrooms. So, and then from 10:00 to 10:30, we have students from every grade level coming to the library to kind of show what it is that they're proud of and what they're learning. So, and we have a variety of students that are coming for this, which is great.
What do you want us there at 9:00, 8:30 or 9:00?
You could be there for 9:00. I'm just saying, they're going to probably show up, like, get in around 8:30, but whatever works for you.
I'll be there. What?
The Dun, like, every time I see it, I read it, the Dundees.
It's the Dundees, yeah. So they want to be here to see the kids come into school, which I think is really cool. And I can't wait for them to see it because our kids come in really happy. Please come in happy.
Maybe we should give the bus driver some sugar on those.
No, sugar on the bus run in the morning. Then our PLC team leaders are presenting. They've given us a rubric in five different categories, and we're going to provide evidence of the score we've given ourselves. Again, site visit to me meant come and visit, but.
There's some work.
There's a little bit of work, which is fine. We're really proud of what we're doing here. And then, yeah, that would be the wrap-up. And then, we'll see. I mean, it's, the people that have been involved are so hardworking and it's been exciting and fun, so.
Well, Swayze, in my opinion, deserves it, but it certainly should be a newsletter article, no matter where we land, right? It's worthy of acknowledgement that we were the top two or we were.
Third tier or whatever.
Yeah, and it's, you know, like, trying to be careful with my words, and they've even said, you're not a finalist, and you're not this. And I'm like, okay, we're not that. So we just, but we are.
Once it's decided, we'll make sure everybody.
We are in it to win it. Once we're started something, we don't, we're not going to hold back. So we're, you know, we're in a really good place. And it's because of the partnership we have with our families. We've met, Katie and I met with, just pre-screened about seven candidates for the reading specialist position today. And talked about, they were like, how are you guys so successful? I'm like, well, we have great staff. We have kids that come to school ready to learn. We have a supportive community that really values education. We have the kind of school that every kid deserves in the country, in the state, you know? That's, that's the way it should be, you know? So there's nothing wrong with being proud of what's here, you know? So last, we're looking forward to the Alunoba trip for our grade five students, second week of May. And before that, our April, before April vacation is our K to five student showcases of learning, where we invite all the families and caregivers to come in and see that. Anyway, that's a long personal report for tonight.
Well, it's two months.
We're still only past 7:30, so we're in great shape.
We're in good shape, yeah.
All right. Anybody have anything else, old business? No? Anybody want to make a motion to move to non-public?
I'm making a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3 to B?
A?
A?
A and C?
A and C?
Thank you, that's great.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I knew you were, you were just digging for it.
I was just reading the other ones.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the certified staff list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you didn't need, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, go ahead.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.